Ready Tom? Ready? Tom, ready?
Leo Potem Garcia. Jason Robb.
Welcome everybody to our city council meeting February 15. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Could we please stand for the pledge allegiance and our explorers will be leading us into that.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of law, liberty, and justice.
And can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for first responders and military members? Thank you. Monica, could we get roll call please?
Roll call, council member Soto.
Present.
Council member Moran.
Present.
Council member King.
Present.
Mayor Potem Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, Mayor, Mayor Potem and council are in attendance.
Council, any changes to the agenda? I don't see any, just for the record in regards to our closed session, we're going to continue our closed session until after our, our regular meeting and we'll continue it and then we'll report, we'll be reporting out. At this moment, we'll move on to our citizen comments. Members of the, this section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public who are recognized by myself should come forward and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought up for discussion. Citizen comments?
Mayor, I'm trying to help you, this council, to prevent the taxpayer dollars from being wasted. The last time I was here, you didn't give me enough time to educate you to the specific code governing hearing complaints against city employees. Given a recent court ruling, you might want to pay attention. Government Code 54957B, 1 and 2 govern hearings and closed sessions against a person that's being accused of things. Number 2 says, "As a condition to holding a closed session on specific complaints or charges brought against an employee by another person or employee, the employee shall be given written notice of his or her right to have the complaints or charges heard in an open session rather than a closed session, which notice shall be delivered to the employee personally or by mail at least 24 hours before the time for holding this closed session. If notice is not given, any disciplinary or other action taken by the body against the employee based on the specific complaints or charges in the closed session shall be null and void." Considering the recent appellate court decision in the Sam Joseph case against the city of Atwater, you might want to reconsider how you're dealing with John Markle and Jose Ramirez. It seems that three judges didn't believe your city attorney's firm's contention that police chiefs have less due process rights than do lower ranking officers. In addition, given the government code section I quoted, your action in hearing accusations against these two in closed session, and I would hope it was in a closed session, not an illegal coming to consensus outside of public view, can be null and void, which means you will owe these two some considerable sums of money. Now, at that meeting I attended on January 18th, you also talked about the recall. It is my understanding that the initiative to recall four of you failed by 100 signatures and 400 signatures was disqualified. Rather odd, given that the proponents gathered signatures using the registrar of voters list from the registrar. While you may believe the recall itself failed, this effort was simply to put your recall on the ballot. It wasn't a recall. A vote to remove you would have recurred later. Likewise, your celebratory attitude thanking the citizens for not recalling you is misplaced as a large, rather large portion of your city's voters have put you on notice. Given your comments, Mr. Mayor, that you're not running for office, and I would say, suggest to you that maybe that recall actually succeeded beforehand. I think I'm going to leave it there. Thank you very much.
Any other citizen comments?
Tonight, I have three questions for whoever can give a responsive and accurate answer. Question number one. When the city bought the land that us old timers know as the hoarder property to increase the size of the wastewater treatment plant, the city used a United States Department of Agricultural loan to buy the land. This loan is being paid back through the sewer bill by residents of the city of Livingston. Am I correct? Question number two. Whatever happened to the lawsuit filed by the guy that fell into the MID canal that Livingston does not own, but we got sued by a Jacobian Myers attorney anyway? What's happened with that? And finally, number three. Do we still have a human resources director or has that job been turned over to the city attorney?
I can answer the last one, I'm not the human resources director.
But do we still have one?
Ms. Michelle Rodriguez, that is a personal item and I will not comment on that at the moment.
And questions one and two?
We will research and get back to you on that.
Okay, you ought to be able to find the answer to at least number one in some of your older budgets.
Any other citizen comments?
Good evening, council. I'm going to make my report to the citizens of Livingston District 1 as well. I saw that, that my last comments were erased by the council and then they were put back on, on social media, Facebook. Oh, well, one of the comments is that the Board of Supervisors in Merced County, we voted to approve a contract with Patriot Rail given a 20-year contract with the option of the county working together with them, maybe for another 10 years. In the beginning, it was a 20-year plus 20-year option, but we negotiated to give that option, to give that option to, to Merced County. Also, well, let me add to that. Where Patriot Rail will be leasing the rail that goes into a castle and we have about 200-plus acres that they will be using to, to add and the county will sell properties or lease properties to future tenants which will provide products, you know, allow businesses in Merced County to send and receive product from all across the country, maybe international as well. So they'll be sending product all across the country, which they do that in Sacramento and other parts of the country as well. So I think that is a good contract for Merced County and all, all the citizens here providing, that will be providing plenty of jobs, you know, much needed in Merced County. This, at the end of this month is the retirement of Jim Brown, the chief executive officer of Merced County, which is a kind of like city manager for the county. And the new Raul Mendez will be taking place, the first meeting in, taking over, first meeting in March. He will be the, the new CEO coming from Stanslos County, which he was a deputy CEO over there with plenty of experience. He used to be a city manager for the city of Houston. I think Vanessa, the city manager knows him very well. And also to that, the rest of the supervisors already gave tours of their districts to Raul Mendez and I will be giving a tour of the city of Livingston as well, other parts of District 1, especially on the, on the west side, including, you know, I'll probably be taking him, dropping him, I asked Vanessa and the council would like to join me on the 24th. I'd be glad to show them around Livingston, fire station, the police department. And we'll also have a meeting with Mr. Zamora from, the superintendent from the Livingston School District. Also, on March 10th, we'll be touring the west side, which would be Planata and Legrand area. I was, I'm glad to say that we appointed Manvin Cower of Livingston to the behavioral health center advisory board of Merced County. So she joins Linda Leal of Livingston as well on that board, my two appointments for the whole county. And also like to say that I, I was appointed by my colleagues, even though I'm, I'm not the chair of Merced County, to the Law Library and I will be the chairman of the board of the Law Library of Merced County. So, which in fact, they do have, they're processing passports as well. So I know a lot of people don't know that and they might be, you might be able to get a, a passport appointment a lot sooner. So let me know if you have any questions. So, thank you very much.
Any other citizen comments at this time?
Hello, my name is Daniel Garibai. I have two things. The first one is that regarding consent item number three, I would like that if the city council and the mayor does not waive the reading of ordinance and resolutions, I think the folks of Livingston need to be, need to be transparent so they can have all the information and all the details that's put into that. The second one is a question, I saw that Geijo Park has new solar panels and was wondering, what is that energy going to be used for or where is it going, going to go? Like, yeah, what is, what is it going to be used for?
That will be part of our public works report and they're, they're just part of the energy efficiency project that it was approved back in 2019 for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to our award presentations and proclamations. We have two tonight. I'll call out the, the first one is a presentation by myself to recognize David Hernandez and Jacqueline Ternas and the United Fund Workers Foundation. I know they're here in attendance. You guys want to come up here, please? Don't be shy. You guys want to come up here? Thanks for coming out tonight, I appreciate it guys. Thank you for coming. We have David here and Jacqueline. First, I'm just going to say a few words and then I'll have you guys introduce yourselves, okay? But we really appreciate the work the foundation has been doing in the city of Livingston. I know you guys have been spearheading that, those efforts here in our town. I think most of, I think all the council at one point volunteered in some of your guys' efforts at Memorial Park. We appreciate all the food boxes you guys provided, the resources, even food carts at one point and all the COVID efforts you guys have conducted. You know, on behalf of the city and the council and, and our city manager, we appreciate all, all that work you guys have done. You know, you guys were here multiple times and, and hopefully we continue seeing you guys here in our community. And I know our community is some, there's a lot of people that could benefit from, from those resources. So we really appreciate it and we want to make sure you guys get recognized and, and identified here in our, you know, formal setting, okay? You guys want to just introduce yourselves real quick and kind of a little bit of the things you've been doing here in our town? And if there's anything coming in the future?
Yeah, thank you everyone for coming out tonight and also recognizing what we've been able to accomplish. We're just really both grateful that we're able to do the work that we're doing here in the city of Livingston, serving folks. I know most of our work primarily resides with, you know, the American and Latino community, but here in Livingston, we've been able to serve everyone here. We, for all of our distribution events, we leave it open to every single community member. So we're just very thankful that we've been able to do that as well as push efforts for getting folks vaccinated in those smaller rural communities, getting folks informed as well. And we hope to continue that work. I know this month was the last, was the end of our program, but hopefully we're able to get some good news to be able to continue this program and the work that we're doing out here in Livingston.
Hello, everybody. I'm David Hernandez. Of course, I'm the emergency relief outreach assistant. So I'm really thankful for the opportunity that the Livingston community offered us and of course thankful to all the council members who were with us and of course, all the community of Livingston who volunteered and continue to volunteer at our events. Without our volunteers, we are nothing. We will not be able to, you know, it's just a two-person team. So having those volunteers, having those, that strong community to work together and to help feed the people that, that need it the most. Thank you again.
Thank you guys. Council, any other words, any comments?
Yes, well, congratulations. I've been a witness of your hard work in so many different areas throughout the Central Valley. So all of your work here for the residents of Livingston is very much appreciated. I, I, I seen what's needed and sometimes like you are always in need of more volunteers and sometimes you still make it happen. Sometimes there's plenty of volunteers, sometime, sometimes there's not enough, but the event still takes place. So that goes to your dedication and to your efforts in making sure that the program is successful. So, thank you.
Yes, I just want to say thank you. I remember that one day was 110. Seen you running around out there, noticed all your hard work, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys. I'm going to present you guys with a certificate real quick and then if you guys could stick around for a little bit, okay? All right, guys, we're going to have our next presentation by myself as the recognition of the Livingston Police Explorers. If you guys want to come forth up here, don't be shy. I'm going to start off with just a few words and then if we could introduce them and just say a few things. But it was very important, I know like it's very important for myself and the council to identify these young women and men of the explorers and their efforts that have been doing in our community. We're very proud of you guys, of all the work you guys do, all the community service you guys do in our city and not only our city, but in other, other venues. So I know, I heard it from all the council, from our staff, city manager, that it's important that we recognize you guys and to, and let you know that we're thankful that you guys are here. We know all the hard work you guys put in. I've seen it firsthand. For example, the pancake breakfast, you guys came through and helped us out. That was a great, great help for us. So we're very proud of you guys. We're very thankful. And I'm going to go ahead and let you introduce them. Thank you.
Oh, my name is Zeus Moldivia, the supervisor of Livingston Police Department, Explorer Post 518. Thank you for recognizing the program. It's, it's pretty, pretty special. The program was reestablished in 2012 by Chief Ruben Chavez and was directed by retired officer Makia. Today, the explorers has been serving the Livingston community for actually 10 years this year. Explorers are mentored through morals and ethics of what we consider old school, but are also trained to adapt and succeed with the expectations of today's society. These explorers who dedicate their time and effort to the program will without a doubt succeed in their adult lives and become leaders of their community. There's an old saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." With the advocacy of the Livingston Police Chief, Mayor, City Council, and of course, the parents. The parents are a huge part. This program will continue to serve the city of Livingston and is an outstanding example of what community policing is. Lastly, I know we all can agree on this. I'm saying, "Train up a child in the way he should go, so even when he is old, he will not depart from it." Proverbs 22 verse 6. Ladies and gentlemen, these are the command staff of Post 518. I'm going to have them come up and introduce themselves, okay?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Devon Saney and then I have been in this post for almost three years now. And yeah, I'm a Explorer Post Corporal.
Good evening. My name is Hart Precor. I've been in the program for five years and I'm currently still the captain of the program.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Ero Cortez and I've had, I have been in the program for two years now and I am a sergeant. And may I just say it's been a privilege working with this community and a privilege being able to work and be able to represent this post and this program. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bhavan Saney and I've been, I have been with the post for almost three years and I'm corporal in the post. Thank you.
Once again, thank you for all your work you guys do and just like you stated, you know, we do see it as a function of, of community policing. So it's, it's very important that you guys continue your work. Congratulations on your 10-year anniversary that the post started again. I'm going to read the certificate. I'm going to give you guys real quick. This is the City of Livingston Recognizing Award presented to Livingston Police Explorers in recognition for the outstanding dedication, hard work, and commitment to the city of Livingston. The Livingston Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and Staff recognize the Livingston Police Explorers for the invaluable volunteer service and contribution to the community. So I'm going to go ahead and hand this over to you guys.
We're going to take a quick, some of the research pictures real quick.
Works up first?
Tony Abena, Public Works Superintendent. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Vanessa. A quick update on our Public Works. We have some new park lights already up and I know it's been a long time waiting, but with the metal and the problems we've had, as of today, both parks at Max Foster and Joseph Gallo Park have new lights and they are all on photo cells. So they, I've been checking them and they are working.
Good news, good news.
One of our play structures at La Cero Park is, probably will not be until mid-March, actually April. But in March, we will start taking down the old structure to prep that area for the new play structure. The alley paving, I know the weather has changed, so that was another good thing for us. The paving has restarted and they're paving the Prusso First Street Alley. And that should be done actually hopefully today and they'll be finishing up the other alley that had not been paved over on the fourth, between Main and Fourth, next to the car wash. So that should be done hopefully by the end of the week. And then the only thing we have on that project will be the final walkthrough and any of the little items that were left or anything that needs to be taken care of will be done before they, that company is let go and paid. The solar project and sewer project are all still moving along great. I did hear something from the gentleman. Those areas were picked out for, from our engineers. So those areas where the solar panels are, the energy that they have for mainly at Joseph Gallo Park, we have a water well that use a lot. It's a treatment well. So that solar panel will help that area. The police department parking lot, the same. All that electricity that is generated from those solar panels will help the police department. And then the last one we have over at the sports complex, we also have the, a lot of the lights, the basketball lights, the, for the recreation and then the new lights that were just put up. All that electricity that's generated from those solar panels will help all those areas. So that's my report for today. You have any questions?
Thank you. Thanks for following up with the playground at La Cero. I know it's also been delayed, but it's good news to hear the lighting's up.
Yes.
The sports complex is great work. Looking forward to that. Council, any other questions for Public Works at this time? Okay, we don't see any. One thing I would like to see is in the future, next reporting, maybe an update on the Measure V projects we got going.
Yes.
The local projects we have been doing this past year and then the ones that we've been programmed to for this following year. It'll be great to see and.
Yes, we will. We, we, I have been following up on them with our engineers and hopefully by April, we should have some word of when the company will be back to finish that Measure V Slurry Seal project.
Awesome.
But we are on them, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vanessa, any other departments?
Yes, we have a police report, Police Department.
Good evening. Very briefly, it's kind of fitting that you guys recognized the Police Explorer Post today. I actually had the opportunity today to go into their, their room that they meet at, at the Police Department for the first time. And my, to my amazement, the amount of awards that they've collected over the last 10 years for different competitions and different things that they've participated in is absolutely amazing. And I was just talking to the officer and the explorers before we came over here. We're gonna dedicate a storage area, not a storage area, but a display case to them, for them, in the lobby of the Police Department just to, to display the hard work and dedication that they, they show to the community. One other thing, I don't know if the citizens or the council has seen it lately. We are starting to redeploy the radar trailers in various parts of town to try to curb some of the traffic issues that we're having. Hopefully that helps out with a little bit of enforcement and education to the community. And the only other thing is there are some items that, that are at the Police Department currently in the lobby. I think that they're probably best fit at the museum. So I'm gonna be working with Jackie to get those things over there to, to make the, the police display at the museum a little bit better. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, Council?
Yes, thank you for the report. I was just wondering, I was just thinking about it right now. I know that you and I talked about it before, but is there a way that we can figure out a way to educate or to inform the community in regards to our current or updated? I know that you're in the process of getting additional things that you need for the, the truck route. But in the meantime, once the time comes, if we can figure something out to inform the community once again, what the actual truck route is. That way, they, they, because a lot of people either they forget or they don't know. I got asked, "Is this a truck route? Is that a truck route?" Well, it's like, you know, so just an update on that.
So one of the things we're gonna start doing, once we get everything in place, and this is kind of like a multi-step process that, that the Police Department and I are working on right now. We're gonna start sending out weekly educational posts through social media. We may pick truck routes one week. We may pick, you know, speed-controlled zones the other week. We may talk about, you know, something else that's going on in the community. Another hot topic right now is code enforcement. We've stepped up, you know, our enforcement in the municipal code with, with residences and yards and just public nuisances as it relates to property. So we're just gonna pick a, a different educational thing weekly and try to put it out there just for education purposes so people know.
Council, any other questions?
Chief, one, one thing, I know we, we talked about it. We had a meeting in regards to our neighborhood visits and, and all that good stuff and outreach to the community. When I was in the council, one of the things I called for was like a public safety forum. I don't know, maybe we could talk about it more. Maybe it'd be a good idea. I think it was the Fire Personnel Administration Chief and, and then Police as well Administration. And we just had an open forum where the public could come and ask a few questions and have a open discussion. So maybe some kind of like, perhaps that might be beneficial some way somehow.
Absolutely. I, I would be well open to that. I, I think it, you know, serves a purpose and as long as it doesn't get too crazy.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's something you could, you know, maybe discuss later with Vanessa sometime.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Anything else?
Anything else? Thank you.
Have a good one.
Vanessa?
No other reports, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to City Manager Announcing Reports.
Not to report tonight.
Okay, and then I'm gonna move on to City Council Member Announcing Reports. Councilmember King?
Yes, today I attended the mosquito baby meeting. And by next week, they're gonna start hiring their part-timers. So if anybody's out there looking for a job, keep an eyes open for that. That's it.
Just real quick, Councilmember King, and I know that's still available when, if you call them, they're able to come out and spray. Is that correct?
Yes, so they were off-season and with the canals gonna be open by next week, they're gonna start spraying within a week or two. So if you're tired to see mosquitoes, just give them a call.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Jose Moro?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I did forget to mention, or I can communicate and get in touch later with Public Works in regards to, I'm working with another agency, Rotary Community Corps, in regards to bringing pollinator patches to the city of Livingston and other communities. And basically what it is, is just a, a, a certain area within the community or near the community where flower beds are planted primarily to help bring bees and butterflies that help the surrounding areas as well. Not only does it help the surrounding areas regards to agriculture, but it also purifies whether it's the downtown or the outskirts of the city. So maybe I'll get in touch with Public Works and see if we can continue with our conversation and share a little bit more information about that and if there are, if there are any other, or certain areas of town where residents would like to see those flower beds, they can reach out and contact me or Public Works and see if that is, if that will be the ideal area for pollinator patches. And within the last couple of weeks, I've been able to participate in with some local nonprofits in regards to cleaning some trails, some hiking trails. I know that as the weather gets better, more and more people wanna go out there hiking. But a lot of those trails are still full of branches, full of trees, fallen trees. So what we do is we, we cut those or get rid of the obstacles, those trees, and then we just move them, remove them from the trail and, and make it something somewhat safe. And then just, you know, that way they, they become open for, for residents to go out there and, and enjoy the hike and enjoy nature. And there's, they're always looking for volunteers. So there's something always going on every week. So if you have a weekend that you wanna go out in nature and help clean up something, just let me know. There's plenty of opportunities for that. I'm also working with the Mexican consulate from the city of Fresno to bring some more services in the near future here in Livingston. I know that some of their services are always in high demand and I'm, I'm working with them to figure out a couple of different dates for the, for, from now until December 2022 where they can come to the city and provide those services again. And once I have confirmation, then I will first check with Vanessa to see if one of our facilities is available and hopefully we can make that work. And this weekend I was also able to, I was invited to participate in another food box drive, which for, they had that event for four hours. It was really amazing and I was, I was glad to participate and still able to see people in our community, not only here in Livingston, but in our surrounding communities. They're still in need. There, there is that need still out there. And just, I'm glad to participate in different ways where we can continue to support our communities. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Maria Soto?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna point out, I did bring some, this is on behalf of the Merced County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, which I'm Board of Directors. Inside the magazine, we do have our local artist, Huel Aguilar. He's featured in here and as well in the back, we have many upcoming events in which Livingston has a good portion of events shared throughout the county. We'll have a VFW, which is hamburger night next week, and a buncow on the Saturday. We have Parks and Recs also mentioned with all of their quarterly events. And we also have reports from the Alumni Committee. So if there are any events that are coming up for our next issue of Amanos through the Merced County Hispanic Chamber, just reach out and either contact them or I and we can get those events published in the magazine and hopefully we see some highlights again from Livingston.
Thank you. Jose, you have something else you said?
Yes, something that I forgot and something that makes everyone happy because food makes everyone happy. So right now, we're still selling tickets for the Silver Grad 2022 for Livingston High School. Actually, tomorrow is the, is the last day to purchase any carnitas dinner tickets and they're only $12. I still have some tickets available. I will deliver them for you. I'll take cash, checks, or Venmo. So just let me know. It's, it's a great project and just, it's primarily to make sure that we help our graduates for 2022 to make sure they have a safe and fun celebration after their graduation. Once again, tomorrow is the last day to order your tickets. I have, I still have a few tickets left. They're only $12. Thank you.
Mayor Pretem Garcia?
I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. For myself, I know we had our, our goal-setting workshop last week. I think it was a success. It was a working workshop where, you know, we identified as a council goals or priorities we wanted staff to focus on. So we were able to accomplish that. So I appreciate the department heads that were here and Vanessa for putting, working hard on, on making that available to the council and be able to sit down and, and set our priorities for the next, for this, this coming year. I was able to attend, we met, you know, part of my, what I like to do is reach out to the community and meet with different groups out there in the community. We met with a skating group company, Killer Instinct Skateboards, along with Councilwoman Maria Soto. I know that's a great, something the community has been asking for is a skate park, skateboarding park. And I know that's a priority and something the community will welcome. So obviously establishing partnerships and reaching out to community members that are also willing to participate and work towards something, accomplishing something like that. It's, it's good to hear. There's a lot of talent out there in the community, a lot of people involved in different organizations. And it's good to see them wanting to participate and, you know, make our city better altogether. Also went to the LHS Alumni Reunion Meeting that'll be coming up in September. So stay tuned for more details. Just a quick question for our Public Works Department. I know we've asked before, I know I've spoken to Vanessa about this, reaching out to MID for their canals, weed abatement and cleanup. And I don't know what's, when's the last time we reached out to them, but I know certain canals have, need to be maintained probably better and if there's a way of us reaching out to them and touching bases. I know there's a few canals. I've heard from several people that, you know, they need some attention. And I know there's some graffiti on the freeway. I know Caltrans has a team dedicated to, to address those kind of, you know, the graffiti. I don't know, we have reached out to them. I know it sometimes is difficult to get through and communicate with them, but if, I don't, you guys could please follow up with that, that'd be great. So thank you. Just gonna go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial will be enacted by one vote unless separate actions is requested by the City Manager or City Councilmember. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council or City Manager request that specific item be removed. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items. Council?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar by Mayor Pretem Garcia. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Maria Soto. Could we get a roll call, please?
Please cast your votes.
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to a public hearing. We have one item, resolution to adopt any rate scheduled for the Livingston Police Department Firearms Training Facility. And we have our chief here.
Mayor, Counsel, this is a public hearing for the rate approval of Police Department Firearms Training Facility fees, and our chief has a presentation for you tonight.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmembers, I come before you tonight to identify something that I, I consider broken and I have a proposition or a suggestion on how to fix it. Just to give you a historical perspective, over 26 years ago, when I got into law enforcement and went to Merced Junior College, we did our firearms training at the Livingston Police Department Firearms Training Facility. If you look up on the screen right now, you'll see aerial photos of what this facility and the buildings and equipment and stuff on the property used to look like. Moving forward in today's time, I've gone out there over the last 26 years, several different times, and I'm sad to say that it's slowly but surely deteriorating. And it's becoming in some places, in some cases, inoperable to where law enforcement can no longer train there. When being appointed your interim police chief, I identified several issues that were occurring. And I, I'm not saying this to point the finger or lay the blame to anyone whatsoever. There were instances where there was inconsistent billing, and when I talk about billing, there was a resolution passed back in 1996 that charged a $700 a year fee to agencies that were wishing to use the firearms training facility to help supplement the cost of maintenance and upkeep. We were only billing two agencies for that fee. There's in excess of 18 different law enforcement agencies throughout the year that use the city's firearms training facility. That's, there's a big gap there. There were instances where the range, I believe the range was being used for personal use. Those have since been identified and stopped. There were private entities that were running and operating their business out of the firearms training facility. That has since stopped and will not happen any longer. I couldn't find an MOU or a release of liability waiver signed by any other agency protecting the city for anything that may happen out at, out of the range. And if you can imagine, and I don't have to say it, there's guns being shot out there. There is some sort of risk. The current range condition? Wrong button, sorry. This is kind of what it looks like today. The weeds are overgrown, that building and structure that you see right there with the walls, that is a hot commodity in law enforcement. That's called a shoot, a shoot house or a Sims house. That's a structure that law enforcement uses to train with and you don't have to use real guns in there. We're actually using real guns, but they're paint marking rounds. My knowledge of it, Ranchwood built that for the city of Livingston many years ago, but that's why there's such an interest in these other agencies wanting to come train there. We have been working on it. Tony in Public Works has been working diligently with his staff to repair the irrigation systems. I've brought in work crews from the jail out there to mow, cut weeds, spray and everything else. And we're trying to get it back up into tip-top shape so it's a better place for law enforcement to train. There's currently two junior colleges that use it. So I, I think it's important, if these agencies are going to want to use this facility to better their officers or train their students and educate them, then they need to have some type of buy-in and help the city refurbish this place. Just to give you an idea, I, there's probably eight of the agencies so far out of the 18 that have responded to me and they're more than willing to sign an MOU, an agreement to release the city from any liability and pay the proposed $1,200 per year fee. Some of the, the agencies are as far away as Manteca, believe it or not, they come to Livingston to train. They only use it like two days a year and they would be more than willing to pay the $120 a day fee to, to use the range. So I'm here asking you to raise the fees, to help support the range, refurbish it and get it back up into a condition that, that is manageable year to year.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Vanessa, you wanted to add?
No.
No, okay.
We need to open the public hearing.
So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Any questions initially by counsel or comments? Any clarifications? I have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Has there been kind of, any kind of analysis of what it costs to maintain it on a yearly basis or make sure it operates at tip-top condition?
If I may, when I got here, currently we budget $4,500 a year for the operation and maintenance of the range. I can tell you that in the last two months, we've pretty much gone through all of that and the, the revenue account for it has been sitting at $2,000 a year. This has the potential to, to get it close to $20,000 if, if we get full participation from everyone that's, that's been using it.
So it's critical and crucial we get those, those funds to maintain it and, and, you know, build on it and, and make it a, a good facility, right?
Absolutely. And if I, if I may add and bring up our goal-setting session the other night, there was a goal or some talk and discussion of a fire training facility. There, there is a lot of land out there around it where a training facility could be erected for the fire department in the future. The possibilities are endless.
Perfect. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and open up for public comment. Go ahead.
Leo Castillo, just want to let you know, if you happen to run short on funds and need like some development, like painting or maintenance, reach out to me and we'll more than happy to help you out with that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment at this time? Or comments? Anybody on the phone? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to counsel. Any further questions?
Just a couple of questions. Are, are there other shooting ranges nearby? How far are they? How much do they charge? And is this particular shooting range, could that be, well, I don't know, let me have you answer this.
So.
Would that be, just one more question, would that be open to individuals, not agencies, that want to use that for like, I don't know, two hours or whatever?
So obviously the range belongs to the city of Livingston. I would highly, highly caution you on opening up for personal use. That, that's opening up a, a whole can of worms that I don't think that the city wants to get into. Speaking about shooting ranges in the county of Merced, there's a range close by most agencies in the county, but nothing like the city of Livingston has. I, I know the city of Los Banals has a small range that's way out in, in the county country area. There's no cover, there's no protection from the elements. You can maybe have two or three officers shoot at one time. There, Merced City has a, a shooting range. It's nothing like the one here in Livingston. The federal prison has a range and it's state-of-the-art, but they're very picky on who they let use it. They don't even let like news media come in there to do a story or document, you know, new police equipment that's being obtained by agencies. That, that's how picky they are. Like I said, there's agencies as far away as Manteca that are coming here to use that. It is vital for, for the Central Valley and law enforcement training.
That's it, thank you.
No further questions. Going to go ahead and close our public hearing. Counsel?
Well, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pretend Garcia. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember King. Monica?
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks for all your efforts and bringing attention to that, you know, specific area. Appreciate it, appreciate Public Works helping you out as well.
Thank you.
So thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move on to council direction on future agenda items. Counsel, any other future agenda items you guys want to identify at this time? I don't see any, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 7:57 PM.
We're going back into closed session?
And yes, we are going to be going back into closed session.